Meeting of the Public Health, Safety, Judiciary and Ethics Committee. A roll call, please.
Alderman Artwoods.
He's here.
Alderman Curriely.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski. Elderwoman Ames.
Here.
Alderman Ardi Woods.
Here.
And Alderman Catalano.
Here.
We have a quorum. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for October 24th, 2024, for this committee. It's a move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No comments. We have one report, a request for an additional class AR liquor license. Is there going to be any comments tonight? I'll make the motion to add one class AR liquor license. Questions, comments? Randy? No?
No, was going to second.
Okay.
Got to second.
Do we need a roll call?
You can do it all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, items to be considered at future meeting, unlisted. Any additions? No? Then I'll make a motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourned. Thank you.
I'd like to call to order the Finance and Administration Committee, if the minute taker can note the same members are present. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the Finance and Administration Committee from January 9th, 2025. My motion? Yep. There's second?
Second.
Does anyone have any questions, comments or corrections? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, and that passes. I have a report and recommendation this evening for fiscal year 2026 CIP discussion. Director Wilson?
Thank you, I'm sure. Yeah, so we're here this evening to discuss the FY '26 through '35 capital improvement budget. As you may recall from previous CIPs, you know, we're really only locking ourselves in, you know, to the greatest part possible for the first year, which in the draft of the document is the blue line, trying to stay consistent with the operating budget where the blue line is the budget that we're focusing on for the upcoming fiscal year. I guess before we get started, though, and get going through this, have a little bit of, I don't know, not housekeeping, but a operating and CIP confluence of events update to go through real quick. We had our preliminary operating budget meetings earlier today with the manager, myself, and the operating departments. It was identified at that time, we had an estimated $1.5 million deficit in the operating budget. You know, every year when we get the first draft of the budget, you know, there's some type of deficit. And we go through refined numbers, fine tune things, look at, you know, requests from the departments, things of that nature, and we're able to get the budget into good working order. However, it's never been 1.5 million. It's, you know, multiples of what we're used to seeing.
Can I? Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot.
Alderman Artwoods.
Can you give us a little insight why that is? I mean, you're saying it's kind of remarkable to prior years. Is there an anomaly in the system somewhere?
Director Wilson?
Yeah, so if I go through the next couple bullets, hopefully that'll, the lower ones, that'll get to your question.
Okay.
And if it doesn't, then you want to happy to go?
I'll double tap.
Perfect, appreciate that. Yeah, so, you know, so in the operating budget, there were some revenue challenges, the largest of which was the use tax, which we get on a per capita basis from the IML. We pulled their guidance that was issued, it's actually in the February IML, that hasn't actually been issued yet, but it's on their website, we were able to pull that down. The guidance for use tax, due to some changes in the Fair Playing Field Act, which is the sales tax act, has effectively lowered their per capita guidance on the use tax from $37.65 for this current fiscal year down to $19.60 per capita for next year. So that's about a $200,000 difference for the city. The guidance states that it should, air quotes, should be offset somewhat by increases in sales tax. Unfortunately, those amendments to the Fair Playing Field Act that went into effect, or that were passed in January, don't go into effect until April and then May, so we won't even see those numbers until July to know if there's any impact or not. So unfortunately, we're not going to know the impact on the sales tax until the middle of the calendar year. However, we can already see the use tax starting to decline in the current periods, and then, like I said, this guidance cuts it in half going forward for the municipal fiscal year. Also telecommunications tax continues to go down anywhere from $40,000 to $60,000 a year. People continuing to cut their landlines, the copper lines, things of that nature. It's down, I'd have to get the exact number, but it's down probably, what, three, three and a half, four million dollars over the last 10 years. So this revenue stream has been constantly in decline. There's really nothing for us to do because the telecommunications act is at the federal level, and so we have no real recourse for a federal act.
Brad, when you say three, four million dollars, you mean over the 10 years, not just per year?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, over that timeframe.
Yeah, you said three.
Yeah.
Just for clarity.
Yeah, correct, sorry. Yeah. Also, there's been increases in expenses, some we expected, some we did not. You may recall during the audit presentation, we stated that there were a couple of anomalous, you know, expenditure line items that we were going to take a harder look at. And looking at those with the projected year end, fiscal '25 year ending, and then what the departments were requesting for fiscal year '26, became clear that those couple of line items that we thought in fiscal year '24 were perhaps anomalous, were not in, were indeed not anomalous. And it looks like those are going to be numbers that are going to be maintained for future years at this point.
Mayor, please.
So the anomaly you're talking about was when we had the audit a month or so ago, and where I saw we were just under six months, and you had said there was some anomaly. So that's not going to correct itself this coming year, is what you're telling us right now, is that correct?
Director Wilson?
Yeah, that is correct. We thought they were anomalously high in that fiscal year. But again, based upon the projected year end results for fiscal '25 that the departments are projecting, looking through the invoices, and then the requests for fiscal '26, those are largely staying at the levels that we saw in fiscal year '24. So, you know, one's a point, two's a line, three, you start making a plane and a trend. So three years in a row, it appears that those few line items are not anomalous, and that's what the levels that they're going to largely persist at for the foreseeable So, you know, one of the things we were talking about was, you know, how do we fix this? So we'll be looking to reallocate the entire utility tax that's currently, or the remainder of the utility tax that's in the CIP to the general fund for at least this fiscal year, perhaps the next two fiscal years while we, you know, analyze everything and then get some of these new revenue streams online so we can see how they're all going to truly start to come in from a timing and volume standpoint. What we would do to offset the removal of the utility tax, which is about $900,000 estimated for the CIP, is remove the work on Middle Drive. Couple of things behind that, we had actually, Mr. Lang and his team had applied for some funding, some grant funding for Middle Drive, and it looked like they were going to receive that. However, in the meantime, ComEd, you know, they're looking to build that substation over for the Cyrus One data centers. A large portion of the route that they were going to run, the power lines, was down middle. So effectively, we were going to spend $2 million to reconstruct and resurface middle, only for ComEd to come in six months later to tear the entire thing up. That didn't seem wise to anybody upon further review, so we're looking to pull middle. We still, at some point, will have to go back and address the northern portion of middle from 390 up to Devon. But Mr. Lang, speaking with, I believe it was the county and the engineers, you know, that would materially change the grant application, so that wasn't really going to come to pass anyway. So we're going to see what ComEd does to middle in totality, and then readdress and reassess middle once that work is done.
Alderman Artwoods.
Yeah, so middle substation, can that be taken out of the TIF funds then? Do we tie those two together because one is a product of the other?
Director Wilson?
Yeah, so the portion of middle that's in the TIF is where ComEd's going to run the power lines, and then they're going to have to resurface and fix middle back up once they're done putting the vaults in and running all the power lines through. The northern phase of middle up to Devon, it could be TIF eligible, I'd have to see where the boundaries are for that TIF. But the portion that's in the TIF that's germane to the substation, it's my understanding it's going to be ComEd's responsibility to restore that anyway, so we wouldn't particularly be out any funds to do that.
And I assume that they would fix what they tore apart, but I would think that, and I know we have some really creative writers on staff, that they should be able to creatively write that.
Please continue.
The other thing, and this has kind of been the first project out the last few years, is the Irving Park streetlights, replacing the current streetlights on Irving Park with the flexed aluminum streetlights. We would also move that project back as well. You know, so net of everything, the STP funding, Middle Drive, the Irving Park Road street improvements, and the utility tax, net effect of that's about $40,000 to the CIP, which if you look at the pro forma cash flow, there is enough money in this year and next year to sustain that. So that's what we would be looking to do. Reminder, the remainder of the CIP as presented this evening would stay exactly the same. So the only thing that would be changing is the Middle Drive portion of the streets program and the removal of the Irving Park streetlight program. And then next year, like I said, we'll reassess when we're doing the CIP and operating budget next year and budget accordingly when we get to that point. You know, without this change, we very likely, most likely, would have to eliminate current positions, so we're talking positions with people in them currently. There was already a plan in place to reevaluate and eliminate some vacant positions just through attrition, you know, for this next budget cycle anyways, but this would be, you know, people actually in position, so hired people that we would have to, you know, lay off, ref, whatever terminology you want to use. And then depending on where those people were, what positions they were, that might lead to additional cuts in staff or services as needed, depending on where the budget came after those preliminary cuts were done. You know, I think with this change, we've already looked at some other changes and started kind of fine tuning some of that stuff. Staff feels pretty confident that we can get there just with this $900,000 and then a couple other, you know, changes. Like I said, we have some changes every year anyways. So like I said, so I think without this, I mean, we're talking, you know, bodies, hired people, but with this change, staff feels confident that we can present a balanced budget to the council for the February 23rd budget meeting.
So I just have a question too. So with these two items that you're proposing to remove, is that enough, or you're still looking for? I know those are relatively larger projects in here, are there other things within any of the other sections in here that you're also considering, or that's what you're looking at now? Because that might be just cutting it exactly where it needs to be, and I know prices of things go up continually, so I just want to make sure that's enough.
Yeah, I think just for us talking right now and then sort of looking through the CIP this afternoon again, I mean, that would cover it and wouldn't negatively impact the cash flows of the CIP. You know, if there's a project that, you know, maybe you wanted to scale back 50%, some smaller ones or something, there might be other things in here that could be scaled back to give a little more money back into the CIP. But I guess high level, that's all that staff is specifically requesting to do. If there's some direction or request from the DIES to modify some things, obviously that would be, you know, taken into consideration and discussed amongst yourselves. But I think for the time being, those would be the two projects that staff would be looking for concurrents on.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, please.
Yeah, real quick, Brad, so a couple of things. So I know you guys have mentioned some positions are vacant, and you were debating on whether you should refill them, if there's a need to refill them. But doing additional cuts to staff when we have so many things going on might put a little strain on the staff. As I said in the past, I don't know, probably seven, eight years, at some point, we got to slow down projects. And I think this is the point where we're about to hit the wall. And we do have some things coming online, right? We got the CIT coming online last month, maybe. Data center's going to take at least a year and a half before you see anything from there, maybe two. So maybe we need to try and slow some things down as we go through the CIP. I mean, there's not a lot in here, I was looking at it, I was trying to figure some, because I knew at some point we're going to have to tighten the belts, because right now we are under six months according, or right at six months according to the audit. And I just want to make sure we stay above the six months.
Alderman Artwoods.
Yeah, along similar lines, I was going to ask the same thing, if we could take our foot off the throttle a little bit. My thought process was to feather out over the two years, kind of to stabilize, right, to find out with some greater certainty what the revenue streams are going to be with CIT, the data centers, both from a utility tax and a real estate tax, what that's going to look like to get a better read for it. There's a lot of moving pieces. Obviously, we have a couple other businesses coming in town, right? The apartment buildings, if it stays on track, that's going to add 160 water users. It's not huge, but it's a little different. All those pieces make a big difference. This would give you some time to clear that 1.5 up without drastically cutting staff, you know. Took us a long time to get here, and I know that we fight battles all the time to get, you know, good staff, so I'd hate to start cutting heads of good people. I'm not going to say it out loud because then they think I like them, you know. So that would be my direction, or that's what I was going to bring this evening anyway, looking at those things that are happening. And there's just, as I looked at, went through the report for the, looking at the estimates and over 10 years, I'm like, how are we plugging in numbers when we don't know, I know how we physically do it, but when we don't really know that revenue stream, which is going to set us up for some interesting conversations down the road. I'd rather, like I say, take the next two years, I think, right? Get through the big bridge project, get through the water tower, those are already in there, and then stabilize and go from there.
Mr. Murmott?
Yeah, I would just, similar to what you're saying, Alderman Woods, I wouldn't categorize this necessarily as terrible news, it's more that the council was used to doing capital projects at like a breakneck speed and intense capital projects, multi-million dollar capital projects, a large road program for a community our size, very aggressive. So it's more scaling back to like a normal pace, and like you said, evaluate some of our upcoming revenue sources. That's why we've been saying we need to add these revenue sources, because if we want to continue at this breakneck pace, which staff likes to do, we know the council likes to do, it just was unsustainable with our current revenue streams and how many capital projects we are doing. Sooner or later, we're going to kind of hit this wall where we have to pump the brakes a little bit, so we're kind of here now, so.
Mayor, please.
Something that's not even on the radar yet. So legislative with, through DMMC, there's been talk, so they've been trying to broker a deal to try and get some of our LGDF back because right now it's costing us about $1 million a year. And, you know, for five years, get us up to 8%. I've heard the governor has other plans about possibly taking a little more LGDF. Again, it's all hypothetical, but as we go through the budget, I mean, we know what we have in front of us, we'll have to deal with that when that comes up. Yeah, we should just start going through this thing.
Director Wilson?
Yeah, I would just say that I did actually reach out to Mr. Ebaris this morning, who had spoken with Mr. Markort, the lobbyist, about that exact topic, and he said that, especially during the winter lame duck session, whatever it is, he said there wasn't a lot of chatter about it either way, which is good news and bad news, right? So there's nothing for us to even really prognosticate on that. Again, we're going to use the IML numbers, but, yeah, I mean, unless and until a deal's in place, I...
Right.
Just don't doubt that that's a possibility.
Alderman Artwoods.
Yeah, and one final thing that I wanted to add, besides what I already laid out, is the other piece that I was thinking about as we figure out what those actual revenue streams are, and they should be fairly robust, that we take a look at our debt and debt service and put that on the line to try to chip away at that a little faster than letting it, you know, that would be a positive thing for the city too.
Okay. You can continue, please.
I guess just before I go on, I mean, is there general concurrence to proceed in this fashion with the CIP? Just the voice voter nods.
When you say this fashion, what do you mean, reducing the work or?
The recommendation.
The recommendation, moving the utility tax and removing those two projects, yeah.
Right. Okay.
All right. Thank you for that.
Welcome.
All right. Getting into the documents. Moving on, again, you may recall last year we went to the 10-year plan. So again, the estimated revenues, again, this is obviously changed in the last 30 seconds. So this $900,000 in utility tax, we're going to move, reallocate that to the general fund for operating purposes. And then also this STPR number is going to go away. That was the remaining half of the Middle Road project that we were working on. Again, Mr. Lang had spoke to the county and the engineer representatives, and they said that really wasn't going to fly, so that STPR is coming out of the mix as well. Everything else, though, is going to remain the same based upon everything that we knew at the time we constructed it and as of earlier today. Again, you know, this money's from MFT, that's the mats, the money's for the bridge, the signalization at Central and Irving, and then the Elizabeth Road Bridge. And again, we'll get into those specific project sheets here in a minute. The water fund, you know, there's 4.4 million. This number is going to be what it needs to be, that's the number for the water tower. So if it winds up being 4.4 million, it will be, if it winds up being 4.8 million, that's what it's going to be. So this number is going to be a TIF bond issuance to build the water tower, and like I said, we're just going to match that number with whatever the cost of the water tower is going to ultimately be. So this number is, you know, likely to change off of 4.4 million exactly, but again, it's a zero sum game because whatever it needs to be of the bond issue, that's what it's going to be to effectively build the water tower.
Alderman Artwoods.
Yeah, Brad, can you, so under 2026, the water sewer fund at 2.5 million, then it drops down to 1.0. What's happening there?
Yeah, sure. So this is the year that hopefully we're finally going to do the Addison Road water main loop. And so this money here in the federal, that's the money from what Congressman Krishnamoorthy, you may recall, we had that event over at the Public Works Building last summer where we got that grant from his office, or the funding from his office. And so we had to put in, you know, our proportionate share of that, which is, you know, maybe not exactly that million, but that increase in funding is to match the money from the congressman for the Addison Road Water Main Project.
Thank you. Please continue.
What's going on? You know, we'll get these project sheets again, but again, series of debt service sheets, again, as Alderman Woods said, you know, once we get these projects up and going, this is something we could, you know, look at, kind of chipping away at if we wanted to do Again, it's just the summary of the pages, which we'll get to here in a second, so. So the pro forma, again, this is a little different, so after, again, those changes that we discussed, these numbers, these first two numbers are both down about 40,000. So this is, you know, 742 roughly, and this is 135 roughly, so nothing too impactful for the CIP from a cash flow standpoint. Again, the water fund is looking okay. Again, this year's a bigger year with the water tower and the Addison Road Water Main Project, that we get back to kind of more normalized years, I and I, supply and maintenance, lift station scattered throughout the document. Then out here in '34, previous year said this at 15 million, we've seen how bids have been coming in for treatment plants, Mr. Gorrelli and his team have been watching that. So we follow this, at this point, unfortunately, it needs to be at least 25 million. I mean, I think between me and the fence post, by the time we get to '34, it's probably going to be 35 million, but, you know, but for now, 25 million seems to be the better guesstimate from the engineering team at this point in time, and obviously that'll keep getting refined as we get closer to that time and the full design and scope of work gets formulated for the cell treatment plants. In the debt service, so in here, you know, the IEP alone and the Series 2028, that's for the Ward Two and Three Stormwater Project.
Mayor, please.
Sorry, Brad, so, but with the treatment plant, about that time, that's about the time the debt is gone on the first treatment plant unless we can find some ways to chip away quicker, right? So it's not like it's going to be, we'll still be collecting the money to pay for that second plant, correct?
Director Wilson?
Yeah, correct, yeah. And the way that the timelines are lined up, it doesn't appear that they'll be, that they'll overlap. That would kind of be the, I guess, the worst scenario is if those debt services started overlapping, but the way it's laid out right now, it doesn't appear that they'll overlap those particular bonds or loans.
Thank you. If you can continue.
Sure. Yeah, so again, the IEP and the Series 2028, those are both for the Ward Two and Three Stormwater Projects. The line of credit, this is the one with Itasca Bank for the land acquisition. We do have in here the 1.265, so the 65,000 is perceived interest payments, and the 1.2 is pay down of that line of credit predicated based on the sale of the former SBT property during the next fiscal year. There will be still a little bit of a balance left on that. We do have that put out in 2029, which is the expiration of that line of credit, but obviously if we sell other properties sooner and we can pay that off, then we certainly will. But that's the latest that we would need to make that balloon payment. Again, that's absent any other land dispositions and monies that we could turn around and pay that off with earlier. So into the transportation category, again, this can be a little bit different, but here's a summary of the projects. Elizabeth Drive Bridge, the trail extension, that's the bike path, walking path, Stormwater Master Plan, street sidewalk resurfacing, the ever popular Wooddale and Irving Safety Improvement Program that IEDOT, I think, is actually trying to close out now finally, the Irving Park and Central Signalization, then the Preventative Maintenance Program. So, who has, yeah, okay. So getting into this, we all know kind of, you know, what this project is, look at the timing on it, looks like fiscal '27, so I guess, Mr. Lang, is that calendar '26 that the work will be done? Okay, so, yeah, so, you know, next summer, calendar '26. Okay, so, yeah, so, you know, next summer, calendar '26 is when that work would be done.
But the multi-use path is starting this summer, is that correct? Is that still on track?
Yeah, we're pursuing the right of way necessary for that path at the moment, so we're targeting probably in April letting and then starting construction in June, kind of coordinating with the school district schedule over there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, yeah, so that was, that was this particular page, the, the trail extension, so one the mayor just asked about. And again, yeah, that is programmed in this year, as Mr. Lang just stated. Stormwater Master Plan, going down here, we'll notice, I know last year the projects were spread out a little bit. We're still waiting on the paperwork from the state, but we were notified last year, I believe, that was in the manager's report, you probably saw that, that we've been awarded a GIGO grant for approximately 75% of the funding, actually of the first three phases of the construction of that Stormwater Project over in Ward 1, specifically right around Third Avenue and 83. So we do have that programmed in here to do that project. Like I said, we are still waiting on the paperwork from the state to get that signed and get that going, make sure we meet all the bid requirements that the state's looking for. I know they're, they're trying to incorporate a lot of, you know, WMBE documents, apprenticeship documents, you know, things of that nature in those bid specs, so we're waiting to get the, the grant requirements from the state before we issue that, before we let that bid. And then again, kind of every other year then, we'll try to do a larger project. Also going to the project list here, you know, these future projects, you know, there are certain road projects that are going to be occurring theoretically based on the new road sufficiency study. So if we are over in that area doing road work and, you know, or other sewer work, we will encompass these particular projects into those roadway programs. And again, you can see the three projects here, or the two, really, the two biggest ones that we're gonna pull forward with that GIGO grant to really try to jumpstart that particular project. And then the, the Ward 2 and 3, you may recall, was it a month or two ago, the council approved that agreement with, was it V3 for the, to study with the Forest Reserve to try to jump on with the Maple Meadows Project? So, yeah, Mary Jane, correct, yeah.
With those.
Alderman Catalan?
Yeah, with the Oak Meadows, are we pursuing any grants on that, knowing that the project's going to happen in the future?
Defer to Mr. Lang for.
Did you say for Oak Meadows?
Yes.
Yeah, so for the Oak Meadows Project, the Ward 1 Drainage Improvement Project, we've been told that we've been awarded Green Infrastructure Grant money for the first three projects that have been designed. Beyond that, we'll have to, the majority of the work beyond that is increasing conveyance sewers, which doesn't really provide a water quality benefit, so there's not a ton of grant opportunities for those types of projects, but we'll always keep an eye out for any and all funding opportunities.
Do we know how much the grants are?
75% for the Green Infrastructure Grant funding for next year.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, if you can continue.
Sure. Street sidewalk resurfacing program, just jump over here to the list. So obviously, again, based on the conversation earlier tonight, the, the middle portion of this will be taken out. So next year, resurfacing, reconstructing whatever, whatever needs to be done, the metro parking lot, and then also the Hawthorne sidewalks. So this would be with the north side of the fire station down to the new park district park. So just providing access via sidewalk from Wooddale Road down to the, down to the new park that the park district's been putting in for this year. And then next year, do this particular section, then in '28, we have this a little over a mile. And then, and when we get into '28, then we'll be looking to do a new street sufficiency study to kind of build that, that program out again for the next five years after that.
Mayor, please.
Yeah, but, so fiscal year '27 and '28, we're not going to worry about those tonight, and those will be discussions for next year, I take it? Or do we gotta, because if we're gonna put the brakes on some things, maybe we need to cut some of that in half or something, I don't know.
Mr. Murmurs?
I would go back to Alderman Woods' point from before, that when we get to next year, we'll have a better idea on how these blends are starting to come together. Well, this year, obviously, we do the same as we do every year, we're just talking about this year. Next year, maybe, like the mayor said, we reevaluate next year at that time. So there are things in the out years that could blend differently come next year. So he's correct in that matter. So just because it says tonight that we're doing something in fiscal year '28 or '29, when we get to next year, it might be '27, it might be '30. So it's going to be a little bit of a moving target moving forward, but it's kind of like that every year when we do CIP, so. Projects come on, projects drop off, unfunded projects get funded, funded projects get unfunded, so more of the, the norm.
It's a working document, so we'll just keep it from there, so.
Continue, please.
Thank you. Again, project was substantially completed in 2016, and the state, I know Mr. Lang's been trading emails with the contractor and the state, trying to finally get this project closed out. When we know something, we will let everybody know. Irving Park and Central Avenue Signalization, again, I think everybody kind of knows what's going on with this project, is scheduled for construction this fiscal year. Funding source is going to be motor fuel tax, MFT monies for this project, so I think Mr. Lang and the team are well in the, in the process of getting this project bid out and getting it going. Preventative maintenance program, again, this is the crack sealing, small sectional patching, road rejuvenation, you know, the reclamite and pavement marking program. You can kind of see where we've been the last couple of years, right around the 200,000 marked the last couple of years. So that's just kind of what we have programmed going forward for Mr. Lang and his team to continue this preventative maintenance program. Moving to the non-transportation category, again, the projects will be going over here, streetlight installation, so these are the, either the, the one offs, you know, the, the ones that are done via the, like the resident request and the survey, or I know in years past, we've just, the, the city has gone through and said where lights are going to go, so that's that program. The Irving Park Streetlights, those are the ones that we talked about, moving back again, IT infrastructure strategic plan, city hall improvements, PD improvements, camera system, so on and so forth. So we will start going through these project sheets here now. Again, streetlight installation, so.
Mayor, please.
Sorry, Brad. I know last year we were talking about the lights and they were short streets, but lending and whatnot. And I know Mr. Lang said something about wanting to serve the streets, but are we, do we have the streets already? Because last year it didn't sound like we were looking for streets, like we're going to Ward 2 again.
So for Ward 4 specifically this year, we had previously approved about $50,000, about half our budget in projects. We're actually be coming back to you guys next month with some other locations in Ward 4 to utilize the rest of that budget. And then going forward in future years, in coordination with the Alderman's suggestions of areas that need to be lit, we'll look to expend that full budget as much as possible.
Mayor, please.
Just to follow up, I mean, we're looking to slow things down. This used to be $30,000 line item, and we tried to become more aggressive, but we need to back off maybe every other year. I'm not sure, from what I remember, what you were saying is, well, we have to look at, so maybe we need to see where the darkest streets are and whatnot, but, and Ward 2 would be next, right? So I'm just curious, have we done that? Are we ready to pick the streets for next year, or, you know, maybe we need to start backing off on this one maybe every other year or something?
We could back off, I'll speak for two.
Yeah.
We like it dark.
So this is someplace, we're gonna, Brad, we don't have it ready to go for next year, maybe it was 100,000 we don't spend, and staff maybe can get some streets and we'll see. If you're looking for the Alderman's request, maybe.
Typically, we do the Alderman surveys a little closer to the new fiscal year, so we haven't started looking towards next year yet, we're just focused on wrapping up the current year.
Mayor, please.
I'm just looking where we can, you know, I mean, I'd rather stop the street light versus some road or something, right? There's really not a lot of beds in this CIP unless you're going down nine years, which we're not worried about.
Alderman Catalan?
Yeah, how many, for 100,000, how many streets can we do with, with that amount?
So depending on the run, usually it's about $8,000 per street light, as long as you don't need a new control panel. So you could do about 10 for that price.
So maybe we can cut down, like you said, to your point.
Right. I didn't know.
Don't stop it, but cut it.
Mayor, please.
Sorry, I didn't know if we already have something already engineered, done, ready to go. If not, you know, maybe this might be a place of pause.
Yep.
We haven't identified any projects for next year yet.
Mr. Murmurs?
Alderman Woods just volunteered, we don't, we're good, '26.
Well, these are the things that, that we're looking to do, to ease up on, maybe a road maintenance project, not the replacement, to ease up on, I mean, you could back off INI for one year, it's not going to destroy the city. If we're looking to stabilize the fund and get back on a, a better footing and get a better grasp of what the new revenue streams are, you know, this is just a minor blip in the road and a readjustment.
Mayor, please.
We're at the INI, in for 850,000. We didn't get to it yet, but I remember the number being picked up. We were going back down to 500, but it's still up there.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yeah, thank you. So as we, as we go through this, we're, we're only saying, yeah, we agree with the first year anyway, so we don't really need to talk about the out years other than we agree to, like, take our foot off the pedal for a while. And these are going to be rediscussed when we do the budget, right? Because you guys are going to fine tune this and then come back and go, this is the new reality and how the dollars are going to flow, correct?
Mr. Murmurs?
Yeah, that is accurate. Maybe there's a miracle by the time budget happens and we say, oh.
Well, we're open to miracles, you know.
Brad's a miracle worker, so.
Never said.
Director Wilson?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, yeah, I mean, you know, the, only the first year, the blue line is going in the, the operating, in the budget. But I guess, you know, if, if, just high level, if there's a consensus where everybody's kind of like, eh, yeah, we're probably good, you know, we can change things in out years as well, like, like I said, we're totally just focusing on this, this next year. Yeah, but if there's a, you know, kind of, the winds are like, hey, yeah, you know what, maybe 100 is not good, we can back that down for a couple of years and then we decide, you know, just, I'm not suggesting we do, but we're not captive only to fiscal '26 if there's something that we need to discuss in one of the out years, I guess I did say that.
Alderman Artwoods?
So are we looking to look at each one of those light items and take them out today, or is this something that you, under direction, would go, these make sense when you do it with all the other things that are going on? Because that would encompass what we're getting grants for, what people are writing grants for, there's other things that would play into each one of those numbers, right? Whether I say this goes, that's why I just pick the low hanging fruit of streetlights, not this year, but next year, if we have to push that back one year, if you have to put, push back, crack filling and standard road maintenance for one year, right? Or the INI, if you had to back off that unless you had something that was really falling apart, get that, but that would put us on a better footing, that, that's what I'm saying. So do we need to actually pull those out? Or is that something that staff would do and go, okay, based on the direction we were giving, this is what we believe the new plan going forward is?
Mr. Murmurs?
Obviously, we'll put our best recommendation forward, but if we know tonight that low hanging fruit is let's back off on the light project, that helps us model next year, so then we can save some time next year because we know in the model, okay. We've got 100,000 to play with this year that could be added on maybe to one of Mike's IT, you know, plans or something like that, so. And lights obviously would be low hanging fruit because, as you know, some residents, it's a little controversial, they don't even want it sometimes when we install the lights. So if the direction is this might be low hanging fruit, that helps us, that helps us model, we know right out of the gates, all right, we've got this right now, right away, so. Yeah, I mean, a direction on that would be helpful.
Right, so then for.
I would say back off on the lights. I'm only one vote up here, what?
Mayor, please.
Yeah, that's why I said at least go to every other year, and if we don't have anything ready for this year, this, back off this coming budget right away and we'll look at it next year. I mean, we know we're going to get some questions, some people want the lights, some don't. And then some of the people that complained about the lights, and after the fact, come up and say, oh, we love the lights, so.
It's always a mixed bag.
Right, right, you're not gonna, not, but again, that's why I say, we don't have it set up right away, take this one off, we'll look at it next year or the year after, back off for two years, whatever, because it's going to take at least a good year and a half to two years to start seeing some better revenues on some of the, especially the data centers. CIT is already operational finally, but.
Mr. Murmurs?
Just a real world example, every year in a CIP, so let's say we have $100,000 budgeted for the lights, right? And we have, let's say, 300,000 budgeted for facade improvement program. While we don't know necessarily if we're going to spend that 400,000, it's essentially escrowed or allocated for that purpose, so we can't install Irving Park Road Streetlights, let's say. But if we tamper down a little bit on those expenditures, there's Irving Park Road Streetlights right there, that's a known project. If we get interest in facade or the lights from residents doing petitions, or businesses are like, okay, yeah, we're ready to do the facade, then we can model that into an out year. But every year continuously having the 100 allocated or the 250 or 300, boom, that's 400, that's a real project like the lights.
So for this evening, if, just say, we don't, you know, we're saying not to do the lights for next year, do you need direction, or do we vote on that or agree on that to pull it out?
It's a recommendation.
Recommendation for the next step? Is that what you would need? Would we have to vote on that?
Yeah, so in the blue, in any blue item, that's a vote or direction, pull out, modify, whatever it is you want to do. And then just general consensus on out years for modeling purposes on something easy like this, we'll know, hey, let's figure out a different plan rather than 100,000 every year.
Right, because each year when we go through this again, we can adjust it for the next years, so.
Yeah, because, because absent a more global direction, if you just say, take it out this year, if there's no commentary for next year, then our presumption is that you want to back in for next year, so.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Catalan?
So even though we take it out, if there's any grants out there, we're still going to pursue grants, right? Because I remember a while back, Dubauch County had some grants that they, we ended up getting, if I'm not mistaken.
Director Wilson?
Yeah, I think if, if there's funding available, we would certainly, you know, pursue that and or bring that back to you and see if, you know, you wanted us to pursue it and where those lights or even if it's not lights, wherever that, that would be, yeah, we, we wouldn't, you know, I don't know, turn off the faucet, I guess, if you will, on, on pursuing those and keeping an eye out for those types of opportunities.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Alderman Artwoods?
So going back, if I need to clarify, the streetlights to back off, the road maintenance, the crack filling, reclamite thing, I'm looking at a two-year timeframe. I think that that gets us on the right path and gives us the better understanding of what the new cash flows are, and then you can build a more robust thing. And at the same time, then be able to start focus on buying down that debt, which will put us in a lot better position moving into the whatever 2035 treatment plant scenario, even though I know that naturally it'll be bought down by then if we buy it down and we're able to put money aside, definitely plus. And the INI, those are the three that I think that we're able to back off for a couple of years and not really hurt anything, unless there's counter opinion. for a couple of years and not really hurt anything, unless there's counter opinion. That's just my opinion.
Mayor, please.
The recomite stuff. So that's basically when this thing goes with the sand on the new roads. And that has to be done, what, in the first three years, four years? Or could it be, could those, I'm just curious how this, and how's the program working, right? Is it helping? Have we noticed something that, just out of curiosity? Because it is fairly new program.
Yeah, rejuvenation programs like that are kind of becoming a standard throughout the industry. They say you're supposed to do it within the first one to three years after a pavement is resurfaced. We don't do it. It's, you know, just a chance that that pavement will degrade a little faster than otherwise would. I will say in regard to preventative maintenance, you know, studies have shown that a dollar spent this year could save you $10 down the road per se, if it's the only argument for continuing.
My, would be my argument for continuing with the preventative maintenance program at the levels that it are, is right now. But, you know, we'll do what we have to do.
Mayor, please.
Yeah, but regarding the recomite, I think first time we did it was, what, five, six years ago? First one? I'm just curious if you guys have noticed, Steph, you know, yes, it does help, not so much. I'm just, in your opinion, right?
I don't think we have a large enough sample size at the moment or a long enough duration of having it down to really compare a road at, you know, seven years with it and without it. I just don't think we have that type of data.
Okay. I'll just ask, just in case, just to hear your opinion, right?
Director Wilson.
Yeah, I think relative to that, you know, within one to three years, like next year, if we're just doing the metro lot and then the next two years, it's what, under a mile and right around a mile? So I think that program, just based on the volume of road resurfacing we're doing, is going to probably contract itself a little bit organically. So I think, I think we should be in a good place with that program, with that, with that.
In a good place as in we don't need to cut it? Or a good place is we can cut it for two years and get back on?
Director Wilson.
Yeah, I'm saying, I think, I don't want to speak for Mr. Lane, but I think the quantities are low enough that are probably, the bids will come in lower, again, organically, because last year we did a 3 million. We did, what, two or three miles worth of streets? So that was a bigger project. But these, just doing the parking lot and a couple of one-mile sections of road, I think just organically, that recomite bids will be smaller. So I think the, the, you know, the spend on that's going to be a little bit less, just organically, based on the volumes from the previous year or two's road programs.
But again, are you saying we don't need to cut it or we can cut it? I get the economics of it. I get that part that you're getting.
I think I'm saying it's going to cut itself.
Okay, so that's not a, that's not a concern. So INI?
Yeah, we'll get the INI. That's water. And then I'm sure Mr. Gurelli's switching behind me, so I'll maybe have him opine on that when we get there. So, yeah.
Mr. Murmurs.
I would recommend we just, when we get to it, let's cut it if we want to cut it. So we're on the lights now for all in agreement. Let's cut that or scale back. And then when we get to INI, cut that potentially, scale back, and let's do it that way.
Is anyone opposed to cutting the lights? Anyone has opinion? If we're all in favor, do we vote on that or at the end? This is a?
More of a direction.
More of a direction.
Direction, okay. No one's opposed to it.
As long as it comes back in the future.
There is no objection.
No objection to that.
Sure, thank you. I already talked about this one. IT infrastructure and strategic plan. So we have some monies in here for next fiscal year. We're on the next page. Kind of look at the project sheet. So Mr. Stenson has identified need of about 90,000 for some server replacements. And then in conjunction with the police department, they're looking, they're still getting pricing on replacing the in-car cameras, the body cameras, evidence management storage solution. And in the out years, continuing the migration to the cloud services. Kind of the interesting thing right now is the ERP. That's going to be a little more protracted, involved project, so we need to start planning for that. And then another mobile data terminal, police MDT. So any specific questions of this, I would have to defer to Mr. Stenson or the chief for any questions on these particular projects.
Alderman Artwood.
I wanted you to answer the technology question.
I'll do my best, I don't know.
The first question I had was the IT assessment that we did. Did we ever see, I know we talked about some of the stuff that was confidential and we would have to do one-on-one meetings. Was there any kind of summary from that maybe that we could all, as a council, look at, not right this moment, but that could be sent out?
Yeah, we did receive a summary action report from the vendor. So yeah, at your convenience, we can schedule an appointment and share that with you.
But it still has to be in a one-on-one setting? That's not?
Yeah, we want to make that an A.
Okay. And then the follow-up, if I can, the worst-first methodology? What's the worst in our IT world right now that we're going to be, is the server the biggest low-hanging fruit of a problem or?
Yeah, so our current server fleet was purchased previous to my taking the position here in 2017. So 24/7 through 65, for instance, out at the treatment plant, we have a scaled cluster that's been running since 2017. And currently, the vendor will not replace that current gear because it's out of date. As far as their warranty replacement, they require for their warranty services, current equipment, because the current equipment we have, we can't get parts for. So once it's out of life, and the way it's designed in a clustered system is you have to have the same devices for that clustering technology to work together. So we're currently end of life on that hardware, so that's the worst-case scenario. So right now, if one of those servers did fail, we couldn't get parts. So our plan right now is then to replace it with the CIP. And then currently also here at City Hall, too, we do have some older servers that were purchased in 2017 as well.
Okay. And I guess my last one is, so I know we weren't talking about the next four or five years, but it looks like about $1 million in technology over the next five, is that realistic? Or are those numbers just plugging in just to plug?
Yeah, so currently our in-car cameras were also purchased in 2019 and then that storage management system. So since I've been here for two years, I've replaced that storage server, because the original server that was purchased with the in-car video, there's such a proliferous increase in, every time there's a traffic stop, the body worn camera on the in-car video records video. It has to be stored based on certain criteria. So that just starts to increase.
Sure.
So we're on our second server as far as storage, and then that's going to increase as well. So, and then our MDTs as well, too.
Does that stuff have to be on-prem or is that all?
So currently, we're looking at another solution, possibly, from our current vendor. So there are different vendors that have cloud services. So that's the, we're in investigative mode currently.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Mayor, please.
So the, I heard the in-car cameras, right, 2019, but I thought the body cameras are like a couple of years old. Those have to be replaced already? Are we just talking about the servers behind that store the?
So yeah, the components are the body worn cameras in car video. Those were purchased at the same time. The storage server, storage management for that data, that's already been replaced since I've been here. We ran, basically ran out of room.
Mayor, please.
No, I mean, the actual camera itself?
Sure.
We had replaced those, too?
Yes.
And they've been since 2019? Also, I thought that, for some reason, I thought it was the last two, three years.
Yeah, I believe that was a CareZax purchase in 2019. And just like any technology, even their vendor solutions, you know, once you buy it, it's basically out of date.
Right.
You know, five years down the road, it's, you know, it's a new item.
Okay, if you can continue.
So next project sheet, City Hall facilities and maintenance. So in this current year, in '25, you may recall, we did an HVAC contract to replace some aging and/or broken HVAC units, you know, a number of exhaust fans and other peripheral equipment here in City Hall. In '26, we kind of have that same $100,000 base for any HVAC units or anything, any other, you know, required maintenance that comes up that would rise to the capital level. Then there's an additional $150,000 in there, looking to redo the FOB, the access control system for City Hall. Ideally, we would go on the same system that Public Works is on. Our current system, you know, as Mr. Stenson said, with the servers is out of date and parts are scarce. So we're trying to get everybody on the same system and also a more modern system to ease with managing only one system instead of two or actually three. We actually have three different systems going right now in the city. So we'd like to get everybody on a system. Again, ease of management, ease of FOB control, and then overall access control across, across the entire city, citywide facilities. And then in '27 and '28, and those numbers are fluid, we'd be looking to kind of, I say this carefully, you know, kind of facelift to the City Hall side. So similar-ish to what they did over on the police department side, probably, you know, wallpaper, ceiling tiles, carpet, get paint, refresh all the spaces on this wing of the building, including this room. You know, kind of give everything a facelift. So again, wallpaper, paint, ceiling tiles. There's also, you know, maybe windows rewired, things of that nature. So just give the north, north part of City Hall a facelift, because at this point, it's the last facility that to be touched in this cycle, you know, the new Public Works building. PD's just on the North Plant. So this building is next on the list for, for, you know, refreshing.
Alderman Artwood.
So is that something we could push back a year, the FOB system, and then tie that into the half a million refresh the following year? Link those two things together as opposed to, you're going to have somebody going through the building, taking out tiles, running tile, pulling wire, doing stuff, and then, I don't know, maybe those things could be, I don't know how mission critical it is, so.
I defer to Mr. Stenson on the FOB system. I know what my answer would be, but I don't see what his is.
Yeah, so our current system here at City Hall, I'm currently buying parts off eBay. So.
So good job. Could you do that for a year long?
So, so the installation that we did at Public Works is the most modern system we have. We have a current system here at City Hall. We have a separate system for our jail infrastructure. And then actually out at the wastewater treatment plant, that system's been damaged for a couple of years from a large lightning strike that occurred. So that same system as well, we can't get parts.
So is that a yes or a no?
In my opinion, we shouldn't put it off. But yeah, currently, the system at wastewater treatment plant, we're back to keys. So that system isn't functioning at all currently.
So is that going to be your answer, Mr. Wilson?
Basically, yeah.
So you guys are ganging up on me for what I'm seeing there? Thank you.
Continue, please.
Sure. Next, police department improvements. Just for clarity, we do expect this project to be completed this fiscal year. However, just knowing how construction projects go, you know, there might be some bleed over into the next fiscal year. I'm not, the 100,000 is there just purely on the chance that just the contract's not completely closed out or something of that nature. I mean, just for context, I don't believe the Public Works project is completely closed out, like all the work's done. They're just tying up some loose ends on some warranty work and things of that nature. So that 100,000 is there not because I think the chief is going to be looking to do more improvements. It's just in case something bleeds over into the next fiscal year.
So then that could potentially be some leftover money that's not used from that 100,000.
Correct.
Mr. Murmurs.
I was just going to say, the chief just told me this week he was planning for the ribbon cutting in March or April. So hopefully we'll substantially complete this.
Good. Please continue.
Camera system upgrade and expansion program. This was in this current CIP, but due to some of the more involved work in the police department, we had expected this project kind of got pushed back. So again, you may recall, this is going to be to replace and then also expand the camera systems, the surveillance, expanding at some of the critical water and sewer infrastructure, as well as replace some of the aged cameras around town that are already existing.
Alderman Artwood.
Didn't we, just like a couple of months ago, talk about the cameras? Because I know I had asked you about the, I think it was tied to the police department renovation about what the cameras throughout City Hall and the exterior ones. Is this a different project?
Yeah, so I think we identified some of our other facilities that don't have cameras. We have, but currently, the system we have, we haven't replaced yet here at City Hall. We're still in the midst of remodel.
Okay.
We're testing out a couple other vendors, so we have a couple test cameras that we're using. But the plan was also to expand to our other facilities that.
Got you.
Yeah, yeah, because we've had some issues, just some lift stations.
Thank you.
Sure.
Good, thank you. If you can continue.
This one's the facade improvement program. You know, everyone's familiar with this is. You know, you can see the past few years have not exactly had the greatest involvement. You know, and to be fair, in conversations for preparing the CIP and speaking with Ms. Springer and the department, we actually did pull this, pull this number down a little bit based upon the past few years' experience and the outreach that they've been receiving from the business owners. She felt comfortable pulling this down. And I think this is a program, too, where, you know, if something gets submitted, you know, it would be presented to the council, streetscape from the council. So I think, I think everything would come forward. But this might be one of those, you know, where the activity's been low, I guess we'll, we'll say, in the last few years. So, but the manager Murmur's point, this is the one where if the money's allocated for that, then it's, could potentially box something else out. So this, you know, could be another, another situation like the lights. Obviously, we look to fund this type of program should somebody come forward. But again, there hasn't been a lot of realized interest over the last few years.
Alderman Artwood.
So we can mirror this, just like the street lighting, and make a recommendation to postpone it?
The program altogether or?
No, I mean, we'll bring it back, but.
Budget zero.
Mr. Murmurs.
Yeah, what we could do something like this is we, obviously, we're still, we've actually been more proactive than ever in advertising the new program, because we made some changes to be more beneficial to the businesses. But this is something where we can say, hey, in our back pocket, we know that we're going to have 200,000 or 100,000 that we'll have set aside. Maybe we take it out of fund balance or whatever, but not lock in the $100,000 that could be used towards something else in a year where we only have $5,000 worth of applicants or something like that.
That makes sense.
So it's not like we're not doing facade on an annual basis. It'd just kind of be kept in a different way, perhaps.
Right. I mean, that makes sense. It's obviously based on the numbers that are here. It hasn't been hugely used, but the program has been enhanced a bit, so maybe there'd be some more interest. So Alderman Artwood.
Yeah, so there's, I believe one person out there that has talked about using it. He's currently redoing his building inside. Have we talked of that?
I defer to Ms. Springer.
Just on the timing thing. So this might be perfect that they're not running.
So we did, as Manager Murmur said, update the program and sent out a letter notifying probably about 135 eligible businesses. In response to that, we got a lot of businesses, and I wouldn't say a lot, but a handful, between five and 10 who called with interest. We've continued conversations with most of them. We do have someone who has expressed interest over the last few years while working on interior project and possibly doing something exterior. Our most recent communication with them was just a couple of months ago, and they still do intend to move forward with some exterior improvements. The timeline, they're just not sure of.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think, do you have a follow-up?
No.
Go ahead. Mayor, please.
Yeah, I think we should just leave this one in, because there are a couple of people talking about it. So at least we have it earmarked. If we need it, we need it. If we don't, we'll find out with over the next few months, I would say. And, but we didn't use much, don't we, don't we still have one outstanding that's not done yet?
Director Wilson.
That's my understanding, but I, yeah, that's my understanding.
Okay.
Alderman Artwood.
Yeah, but I thought that's what we just covered, that there really isn't anybody coming forward. So if he takes it out, and as they said, they can always add or something in if we need it.
Well, that was going to be my question. So if we take it out, but if somebody, if Well, that was gonna be my question. So if we take it out, but if somebody comes forward, we're not gonna say, hey, we don't have any money in the project, you're gonna bring it to us?
Director Wilson?
Defer, but we're gonna say the same thing, so.
I was just gonna say, you know, zero it out, but advertise the program as an annual program, and then as the applications come, it's a merit-based program, and we'll certainly fund the program like we always do. It's just a dead weight on the CIP, the way it is.
Okay, makes sense. All right, thank you. Continue.
Absent any objection?
Oh, do you have more?
I was just gonna say, is there any objection to that approach?
My opinion is, if we're gonna cut back and put the brakes on, we should put the brakes on for a year or two.
Mayor, please.
But if you got somebody who's looking to clean up on Irving Park, right, and everybody's timing is different than when they can do something or can't, so.
Well, I think what we're talking about is not discontinuing the program, but just not holding this $100,000 in a kitty somewhere that is preventing it from being spent on something else, right? I mean, that's what we're saying.
When they call, we'll assess it. That's gonna take a while, and it takes a while to get all the paperwork done. So, based on what staff has said, doesn't sound like anybody's coming or be able to do anything for at least a year.
But to be fair, so, does anyone have an objection to moving forward with that, just taking it out of this line, but still funding it? Everyone's, no one has a problem with that? Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Next project, defer to the manager on this one, but SOC and the Rail Coalition. Yeah, I think we all know what SOC and the Rail Coalition is. So $30,000, again, plugged in, kind of out here. I know, I speak with the manager at this point, especially on the rail side, it's more monitoring with that coalition. And then, I don't know, for SOC, is that, so I'll defer to the manager.
Mr. Murmas?
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm putting an update in the manager's report either this Friday or next Friday. Basically, the legal firm that the coalition has hired is kind of wrapping up the timeline on the case that's being heard right now. The case that's being heard right now is essentially just asking the federal government to do an actual study for the Chicagoland region, for the traffic impact analysis, instead of taking averages from like rural Oklahoma and applying those numbers to our traffic counts here, which obviously aren't the same. So that court case is scheduled on the docket to be sometime in the near future. The date escapes me, but I do have the date, and I was gonna give that to the council. So expenses have been going down, and we did also get some money from Springfield for this, for the monitoring portion moving forward. So this is really kind of a miniscule expense moving forward, but I'll keep updating as things arise. But we're in the monitoring period right now. We're in year two of a seven-year monitoring period. The impacts today haven't been too rough, as far as what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing in the community. I think the chief could attest to that with delays that we're having. Also, that link thing system is coming online, and that's meant for the, first and foremost, for the first responders, to make sure when they're going to calls, they know in advance when the trains are coming. So it's an ongoing thing, but it's not a big expense. But we want to make sure we're still in with the rest of the coalition.
Okay, thank you.
Flood property buyouts. At this point, you know, we don't have anything budgeted in future years. I think it's a case-by-case basis. You know, if Mr. Lang and his team or anybody, you know, there's an opportunity to acquire a property or a property becomes problematic, you know, we would perhaps look to put some money back in here. But I think this sheet's definitely kind of a, you know, as needed, a case-by-case basis. And if funding becomes available for certain houses or areas and things of that nature.
So we'll make the light sheet and facade sheet like this, so it is included every year, and it'll just be like that?
Manager said, yeah. So, yeah, so the lights and the facade sheet will look very similar to this, where we'll present the history on it, and then we'll just have some zeros in there. But that way, it's part of the program, so it's in front of everybody on an annual basis, so that you're aware that it's an ongoing thing that could see some funding, you know, if businesses, residents come forward. So that way, it's still in there, still in everyone's, you know, mind's eye, but not specifically funded to any particular, any particular number.
Okay, thank you.
For your drainage, I would like to point out, Mr. Lang corrected me that I did not update the top of the narrative here for the new program. So that, he already, I got it highlighted and flagged. So in the final version of the CIP, that will be corrected. So my apologies for missing that on the front end. Again, similar to the other two programs, you know, it's, this has been the history over the last few years, and then just have some funding in here for the, you know, in the past, it was four people, so it was $5,000, but now, this could be, you know, you know, two or three people, depending on the nature of the project. So, but again, just a bucket of money there. Again, kind of like the facade and the other programs, you know, should people come forward, there's a bucket of money available for them.
Alderman Artwood?
Since we moved to the $10,000 mark, have we had anyone take advantage of that? Any residents?
One or two.
I didn't see...
One.
Just one? Okay.
So to your point, leaving it at 20, would still make room for two to three to four, maybe, depending on the project?
Yeah, I think it'd be somebody, the other programs, if somebody comes forward with the program, we'd vet it, and then, you know, so I don't, I don't, we haven't had a ton of these on any given year, so I wouldn't foresee, at this exact moment, you know, telling somebody no, because your project's $10,000 and we only have $9,000 left.
I was gonna say, even at the $3,000 with the cost share, we still only had a couple people per year, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, please continue.
We're doing a commercial park planning. As you know, Ms. Springer and her team is working through this currently with Upland Designs. To be honest, these numbers are complete guesstimates, based upon kind of what we've, you know, seen some other areas potentially cost. So the timing and phasing and amounts on this, like I said, at this point, are very rough, very estimated. But we did want to make the council aware that we are acknowledging that we're, you know, gonna have to put some money into this project over the next few years. And so that's why these are here. Like I said, these are, you know, guesstimates at what this might cost, and showing like a rough phasing. If there's any questions or Ms. Springer has any comments, but that's where this is at at this point in time.
Okay. Alderman Artwood?
So the $100,000 was just a number thrown in, or was there anything behind the SOC process with that hundred, or it's just a placeholder?
Director Wilson?
Just 10% of construction the next year. So placeholder yet.
Gotcha, thank you.
Go on.
Yeah, so that's it for the general capital projects. We're now moving into the water section of the CIP. These are the projects, the project sheets we'll be going through here. So the water distribution master plan, so this is really, you know, for the potable water, drinking water side of things. We do have the money in here. Again, this is largely the Addison Road. So if we get to the next page, we can kind of see where the estimated projects are. So again, you know, this is the Addison Road Loop, and then these are some of the other future potential projects. And again, a couple of these do align with some of the stormwater projects. And so we'll make sure that we line those up as best we can going forward. And I would have to, again, defer to Mr. Lang and his team for any questions on any of these, any of these sheets. Infrastructure tap-on. Again, this is, you know, for people that are on well and/or septic to tap on to city water and/or sewer. Again, you know, this year, I think, was the banner year. I think we had five or six people apply in '24, but in '23, we had three, and this year, I think this year, we have one so far. I think there's one person that's been kind of talking about us, who estimated there's two people. But historically, it's been, on average, two people a year that have been taking advantage of this program. And it seems to be either a new homeowner coming into town, wanting to be on city water that was elsewhere, or when their well or septic fails, and they can't get their permit from the county that they have to come on to ours. So there's been a lot of voluntary conversion of people whose systems are currently working, I guess I'll say.
Mayor, please.
And some of these people were also people that annexed in, right? They were unincorporated in.
Correct. Water facilities and upgrades. So like I said, the two pages ago was more the transmission of the lines, lift stations, whatever. So this is the equipment and the facilities. Again, the 4.4 million in here, the 4.8 with the supervision is the water tower. And then, you know, the other $100,000 is for Mr. Lang and his team to make necessary repairs on the facilities as something comes up, you know, pumps, you know, other systems, things of that nature. So this particular year, they've identified the chlorine system that needs to be looked at in addition to the water tower. And then you can see some of the proposed projects over the next five years for the water system.
Please continue.
Inflow and infiltration program. So here's the, kind of the spend over the last few years. And then, like I said, I will defer to Mr. Lang or Mr. Gurelli to explain kind of why we're at 850 and then tapering off. I know there's been some conversation about it, so see who wants to take that one.
Thank you.
Yeah, he loves this program, that's the thing.
Thank you so much for allowing me to make my case if we could keep the 850 for this year. So as you correctly brought up, we've made huge impact with the amount of INI coming in. The North Plant, before we started, INI was averaging 12 to 15 excess flows a year. We haven't had one since June of '21. South Plant would average between five and 10. I think we're going on a year without one. So we're not so much concerned about the flow, which, I mean, we've made great impacts there. We're more concerned now about the structural issues that if a sewer could collapse. We spent, I don't know, we've been like four or five years in Ward Four. That was in very poor condition. We're approaching 50-point repairs, 50 partial collapses. So we're done with Ward Four on all the structural work. So we're very happy about that, and we managed to get away without causing the residents any major issues. The problem is, though, that we spent so much time in Ward Four that we're starting to get some collapses in the other wards. This year, we had one in Michael, in the industrial district, and we had another one on Iroquois, near Montrose. And we were lucky, we dodged a bullet on both. Just to give you the one example, on Michael, a licensed plumber happened to be driving by the moment that that sewer started overflowing. He jumps out of his car, sees it, calls Julie. Julie calls me. We get someone out there and got enough roots out that it never went into a storm sewer. But if we would've gone into a storm sewer, we could've, you know, potentially got a fine from EPA. The one at Iroquois in Montrose, another partial collapse. The resident happened to be home, saw sewage coming up in his basement, happened to noticall Julie. We happened to get there within minutes. We did enough flushing and temporary stuff. It's partially collapsed. And we were able to minimize any sewage in his basement, and now it's set in this contract, so we're ready to bid out a contract. Both these repairs are in that contract, you know, where we'll have a contractor at a bid price do them. But we're just concerned if these collapse any further, that the resident might not be home. And he was a very cooperative resident, because most people, if they get sewage in their basement, are very upset. He thanked us how quick the response was, and it minimized any sewage in his basement. Another thing we need to look at is that we're gonna address is, we can cover between five and seven years, us, we have a TV truck, and we can cover that. We've been so focused on these areas with problems that we were worried that there could be other structural ones out there that we don't know about, and it's, we don't want to wait a year or two to get it. So within this contract, we were gonna get some help TVing. And on top of it, we have a very basic TV camera. We don't have like specialized equipment. So if the sewers are in poor conditions, our equipment can't get through it, so we have to get help from a contractor. So we did get help from a contractor doing some of the poor areas in Ward One. And if we decided not to do it next year, all that would be wasted, because when you bid out a contract, you need all that TV footage there, so they can see what they're bidding. If contractors don't know what they're bidding, the prices jack way up. So we've invested in getting that poor-conditioned pipe, backyard pipe in Ward One TVed, and we did some of our TVing. So all that's ready to go. So if we deferred this contract, we would have to redo all that. Another thing that we want to take a look at, Naperville recently had a force main bust in someone's backyard. It put, I think, I believe, around 250,000 gallons of raw sewage in their backyard. The resident was not happy about that. In addition, it went into a storm sewer, so they have IEP issues. We have two force mains that are quite old. One is woods, and the other is ash. What we'd like to do, because force main replacement, as we know, when we did that with Kletz, that was very expensive. They have technology now that can measure the thickness of a pipe they send it through. You could do a force main inspection. It'll tell us the exact thickness. If those sewers are on the verge of collapse, we would put this quicker up in capital projects. We would, instead of doing the lift station next, we would do that. In light of what happened to Naperville, we'd like to get two, those two inspected. Plus, woods goes through a lot of backyards. It goes like 2,000 and some feet through people's backyards. So if it busts at any point, it would cause those same issues that Naperville did. So we're looking at some help TVing, identifying any of these issues, like these two failures. So we catch them and address them. So we're not so much focused on the INI anymore, even though that is important. We've made huge, the North Plant now has a peak flow of about four to five MGD less than when we started, at least when I got here. So we're making huge adjustments there. But we do want to find, within this next year, find any more of these like sleeping problems, address them before we back sewage up and residents home. Then we have two other things we wanted to hit. This is before Stacy got here, it was decades ago, but we happened to build two buildings over existing sewers. One of them, for a while, was not a problem. We're at Ash and Irving. There's a new company, Osti, I believe, it's something like that. They're doing work on a building. So if we had to go in there and dig up before, it wouldn't be as much of an issue. But if they get this building operational and that sewer fails, and it, we had to have a contractor TV it. So what we'd like to do is line that. And then it'll be good for 50 to 70 years, and it won't be us worried about it if that does bust. But if a company comes in, they redo a building, and we gotta go in there with a backhoe and dig it up, I think that would be major issues. The other building that we put over a force main, oh, yes.
Well, Mayor, if we're gonna do questions, Mayor, please.
No, go ahead.
Oh, just one last one.
Go ahead, let him finish.
We built, you know where the existing Marianos is? We built that over a sewer. So we'd like to line that also, because those businesses would be very upset if we had a failure in there, and it's, those pipes are quite old. So these are all the things we want to hit in this contract. So it's a little different. We're not so much focused on INI, but we want to protect the residents of structural failures. And because of spending so much time in Ward Four, we believe there's probably some more out there. So if we could be allowed this year to attack all these issues that I brought up, in future years, we could bring that down. But we're, this next year is about attacking structural stuff to protect our residents and these businesses that we have sewers underneath their businesses. I hope that helps.
Alderman Artwood?
What kind of liability, if anything, do we have when there are backups, as far as like us having to pay to restore?
We haven't had to pay one so far.
No.
But, you know, we've been dressing, the burden is on us to prove that we are maintaining the sewers. And if we prove that we're investing in the sewers, doing work as such as this, the insurance companies had said we're on solid ground. But if there's negligence on our part, you know, we would be liable.
Thank you.
Alderman Artwood?
Yeah, first of all, how can you say no to him? I mean, he's so passionate and so knowledgeable, he's got it all down. So I'm gonna go with that was a no. But back to, we built buildings over the sewer, our city's sewer mains.
Decades ago, though.
Okay, well, but they're still there.
Okay.
Right? And shouldn't we have to like correct that? We're just gonna continue, that doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, so...
Either from the property owner's standpoint or the municipal's.
And that's why, in this contract, we're putting liners through them. This contract that we're gonna bid out this spring, we have it, we TVed it. We have it set to have a liner in there. That liner would be basically like a brand-new sewer. So that gives us 50 to 70 years to figure out something. But it'd be a low-cost, inexpensive way to make sure those businesses are protected.
And so this is the Osti and the...
The current Marianos, yeah. And the other businesses that are next.
The current one, or the empty lot one?
The one that's where they're cooking, where we gave a pizza tomorrow.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. And I'm just interested that there is no, that we don't...
And I'm just interested that there is no, that we don't move that pipe.
Well, it's, it's gonna be bid out in a month or something, yeah.
Mayor, please.
I think what Alderman Woods is saying is, why wouldn't we correct the problem and get the pipe out from under the building, right? Is that?
I'd be telling you to get it out if it was my building.
Uh, we could respond much quicker by putting a liner in. Now you're talking about, you know, the expense would be so much more. I think we could get a, a li, we believe, from the inspection we got, we could get a liner, and they're really quickly, quickly inexpensive, and then that buys us half a century to, to do what you just said, though. Whereas, you know, right now, we have liability. It would be very involved to move the sewer. I mean, it's not impossible, but more expensive, more design, where we can respond really quickly with a liner, and then it gives us time to do what you just said.
I don't doubt anything that you said, except for, then the building's complete. And it's a commercial kitchen, I believe, and if something happened, we'd have to like tear a lot of things apart.
That's what concerns us.
We wouldn't have to today.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, you know, no, I think, I think we should do what we should do, but we should do the, you know, there's a certain amount of liability. Just, we'll respond quickly, get that liner in there. We already have the design being prepared for that. And then we can, they'll look at definitely what you're saying.
So it looks like at the end of this conversation, we can't cut anything.
I wouldn't recommend it this year.
But Brett has a future CIP item for 2050.
Any other questions?
A quick question. So when we started the INI, we were like on section three or four, and we got to three and four, and one and two weren't done yet, fully complete. Are we complete with all the sections that we've started, or do we still have open work to be done? Like, we, we're probably on like nine or 10 now, or 12. Are, are most of them done, or?
So for the majority of the sections, we've completed the priority repairs, which is the structural integrity and a lot of the lining. There's still some like manhole repairs in some sections that we haven't gone back and done yet. Our staff has been performing a lot of those on their own through Ward 4. But April 10th, I plan on providing an update on where we're at with the INI program, which checks if they've completed and where we look for the future.
Yeah.
Mayor, please.
The only reason I bring it up is because I think we're on like number four, and we're talking about number five, and the first two or three weren't even done, or halfway done. So I'm just, I just wanna make sure that we're cleaning those up.
And that's why a portion of this contract is for televising, to go back and see some of those areas that we've already completed, and see some of the sections that we missed, and what kind of shape they're in now.
So with the INI program, though, to stop doing it or slow it down, I mean, that's ultimately putting more water in our system that we're having to treat that we wouldn't have to if that wasn't an issue. So it's just kind of like a full circle. If we stop addressing those issues, we're gonna have more water in the system that we have to treat that we wouldn't normally, and then it makes the plant work more, and so it's just, it seems like it's an ongoing issue.
Yeah, maintenance is always gonna be.
Because things are always gonna be cracking or breaking, and with televising, the lines, and you can see where that, and we don't have, so what Mr. Gurelli was saying, we don't have the proper televising equipment to do that. That's why we contract that?
Four really bad sections of sewers. If there's a, a bad offset or some, some heavy roots we're not able to clean, contractors have more specialized equipment that are able to get through that better than ours. But now that we're done in Ward 4, which had a lot of the backyard sewers, we expect those costs, those construction costs, to continue to come down, so it kind of is naturally going to.
Whereas, we're able to do the work on our own as opposed to contracting it. Is that what you mean, to come down?
No, it's just, point repairs are gonna be less expensive, because they're not gonna be dealing with somebody's shed or a fence, or have access issues, or large trees, overhead wires, things like that.
So what do you say? Is Ward 4 was the problem? I don't know what to say.
Not so many words.
But.
We just wanted some special. Thank you.
Okay, please continue.
So plant and lift station maintenance. Again, this is where, you know, the North treatment plant, South treatment plant, and then the lift stations. In here, we have a couple of different things for this particular upcoming year. We have the ash station, ash lift station modernization program. And then we have some SCADA HMI upgrades that are needed over, at the treatment plant, right? At the treatment plant, yeah, the, so that's, that's what's programmed in for this year. And then you can see kind of the out years, and I think what Mr. Gurelli was talking about with, you know, looking at those force mains to see where they're at. So we have a design for a lift station, but we're not sure which one. But I think a lot of that's gonna be kind of informed by some of the work that, that him and his team are gonna be doing this summer with that INI contract that they were just talking about. And then, again, you know, the flow monitoring study for South Plant, South Plant Design Rehabilitation. And we have a note at the bottom there. That was the, I believe, the most recent note that we got from Mr. Gurelli and his team based on current state of regulations. So unless that's incorrect, Brett, I think we'll go with that, right?
It's being negotiated, but if negotiations between the government, between like Sierra Club and the US EPA and IEP, but if, if the current state negotiations stays, those numbers are correct.
Good, please continue.
Unfunded projects. So this year, we have two. The decorative streetlights, that's been in there a while. That's the Prairie-style lights, kind of like what we have in front of City Hall. So there's the, the three different areas that we potentially might look to add those. Montrose to Elizabeth on Wooddale Road, Foster to the 390 Bridge, and then Addison Road from Irving Park to Maple Meadows. Those are the three areas that had been previously identified for those, should funding ever become available. And then, lastly, I know, I also saw this project a couple months ago and said no to it at the time, was the parking lot on Central and Irving, kind of underneath the water tower. And then, that is all I have. Manager.
Questions? Anything that wasn't covered? Alderman Artwood.
So did we solve for X? Did we eliminate the $1.25 million? Are we good? Do you have enough direction?
Yeah, I believe we have enough direction, based on the conversations. I think, manager will concur, that I think we're in good shape. So yes, we appreciate the conversation and consideration this evening.
Mr. Murm.
Again, apologize for the surprise at the beginning of the meeting, but we literally had our, our first budget meetings about 12:30, 1 o'clock this afternoon, and we didn't wanna wait until budget time. We, tonight, we thought tonight would be the appropriate night.
No, better today than tomorrow, and it'd be a whole different meeting, yes. So do we need to make a motion to approve with the pending changes? Or are you just, are using this as direction for moving forward?
Yeah, let's say just a motion to approve it, I guess, as amended. And then, like I said, we'll roll this into the document that you see that comes out on Valentine's Day. It'll be my gift to all of you, the operating, but the draft of the operating budgets. So we'll roll those changes into, into that, so you'll see those numbers be represented in the, the full budget that comes out in draft form on the 14th in preparation for the 23rd meeting. So yeah, a motion just to, to approve and forward along in the process as amended would be appreciated.
I'll make the motion to approve this CIP as amended.
Second.
Doing a roll call. It's all in favor.
Voice is fine. It's just concurrence, so.
Okay, all in favor.
Aye.
One opposed, and that passes. Items to be considered for future meetings, budget on February 27th. Does anyone else add? If not, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.